How about if I do that? I think we'll begin this morning, call the meeting to order. Ask everyone, please rise for the singing of our National Anthem. Thank you, please be seated. All right, item one on the agenda is additions. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Counselor Fredrickson, all in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0 is corrections or amendments to the August 9th, 2017 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes. Any corrections or amendments? And the August 21st, 2017 Special Meeting of Council Minutes. Any corrections or amendments? Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Special Medium of Council, item 4.1, we have a numbering issue with the bylaw. It states that it is 2017-01A and the resolution is for 2010A. And I believe the correct numbering is 2017-10A.
I believe you are correct. All right. With that correction, could I get a motion to adopt the August 9th Regular Meeting of Council Minutes and the August 21st Special Meeting of Council Minutes? Counselor Bossert, all in favor? That is carried. Item 5.0 is our proclamation for Drayton Valley Materials and Waste Management Month. (Lipsmack) Just a second. No, I don't have these committed to memory. All right. Drayton Valley Materials and Waste Management Month, for the month of October 2017. Whereas, Drayton Valley as a municipality is committed to sustainability and we recognize that a sustainable community is one that is economically, environmentally, and socially healthy and resilient and meets challenges through integrated solutions. And whereas, a sustainable community manages human, natural, and financial resources to meet current needs while being mindful of and responsible for the future. And whereas, Drayton Valley has been nationally recognized for its community sustainability plan and the strategies and goals we have set for ourselves as a community. Whereas, we recognize the growing concern of responsible consumption and the need to reduce waste, increase reuse and recycling. Whereas, Drayton Valley's Community Sustainability Plan provides benchmarks specifically related to materials and waste management. Whereas, the Community Sustainability Plan promotes waste reduction and separation in our community and strives to develop education and awareness programs on the importance of reducing waste. Whereas, we recognize the National Waste Reduction Week. That National Waste Reduction Week will occur from October 16th through 22nd, 2017. Whereas, Drayton Valley has enhanced its fall cleanup program to include the CurbIt program to promote reuse of household items, which will occur October 5th, 6th, and 7th in advance of the fall cleanup. And whereas, Drayton Valley has a full-time Take It or Leave It Center and a hazardous household goods center, as well as free residential yard waste drop-off and offers curbside recycling and the no-charge 3R Roundup Program, all of which support diversion of waste from the landfill and will contribute to the long-term efforts of waste reduction. Therefore, I Glenn McLean, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim October 1st through 31st, 2017 as Materials and Waste Management Month in the Town of Drayton Valley in recognition of our collaborative work with the residents of the town to reduce waste as a significant component of community sustainability. A lot of "whereas's" in that proclamation. It's all important information. Moving on to item 6.0, page 12 in your package. We have our public hearing in respect of, I declare the public hearing to be open in respect of bylaw 2017-06D to allow the adoption of the 50th Street East Area Structure Plan for the lands legally described as the northwest, northwest and southwest of 449-7 west of the 5th and the northwest of, at the northwest of 33, 48-7 west of the 5th. Let's see. Moving on to the purpose of the public hearing, to receive comments, concerns, and questions from the public with regard to the proposed area structure plan. Said bylaw I've passed will allow the lands to be developed for commercial and residential use. The above bylaw receive first reading at the July 19th, 2017 Regular Meeting of Council and may receive second and third reading at a future council meeting depending upon comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been done through mail-outs, the website, social media, and newspaper advertising to facilitate the public hearing process. Any comments received, written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. So at this time, I know that we have a number of written submissions, but at this time, I'm going to call for comments from the floor. Are there any members of the gallery who would like to speak to the 50th Street East Area Structure Plan? No? Mr. Smith? If, Gordon, I could invite you to come to the podium. I just asked you to, if you could state your name for the record and then...
I'm Gordon Smith.
Excellent.
Yeah. And I did have a few concerns about the way my, down at the Essel Service Station and the derricks there is being concerned and whatnot, so. And I don't know, do I go through each one a little bit here as this is kind of what you guys would want me to do now?
You certainly can.
Okay.
We've got it all in the form of letters and that, but if you'd like to give us an overview, sure.
Now, I guess back in 1913, we rezoned and subdivided. And the town wanted to guarantee that the approaches would be built to town standards. So we gave the town $35,000 to ensure this demand. As for the plans that are being presented, we will not have access to the five acres that is rezoned to do the highway commercial. There will not be a road abutting this property. So I've got no access at all to my property that's zoned highway commercial.
Right.
And I guess how does the town plan to resolve this?
And that's figure five in the, in our package, page 16 of our package, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you have some other items. I'll just let you go through the list of items.
And my next comment was that, as for the figure in the staging plans, Atco Pipeline right-of-ways are not shown on anything south of the 20th Avenue. And there's many pipelines on my property. They're not shown there. So if a developer decided to do something like this, this could be a major stumbling block for him when he finally sees there's pipelines on there. So that's, that was my other one there, which is, I think that's a very minor little thing there, but it is, it is there. And my next thing on the stormwater management, according to the pictures here that I can see, the stormwater can never leave that property. There is not an outlet to the stormwater to get off my property on the pictures there.
And you're referring to figure eight now?
Yes.
Right?
So it just can't get off there, but, which is also irrelevant. It does get off through the culvert by the derricks. So there's locks there. But on also, the one proposed stormwater management on Highway 8, Highway 8 property, and during my life living on this property for 45 years, there has never been a water buildup in this area. So I question the logic of having a stormwater sewer on a place that water never does accumulate. So, and then I guess this figure nine B. I'd like to suggest that the road be positioned on the town sewer truck line. This would make better use of the land as infrastructure would go together. So the way the plan is right now, the way you're proposing it, the road goes right through my house. So I do realize my house is going to go, nobody else will live there. But in the meantime, if the road goes through my house, we have no time to develop anything. If we put the road on existing right-of-way, my house could stay there for probably five years while that five acres is being developed and that would be the major corner I think the town would like to see developed in there, because that major corner would be the area that could be advantageous to the town if there's something there. Like I have talked with Co-op there, Rick Paulard there, and he says, get me a road. And so, so there could be a Co-op food bar there.
Right.
And, and a lumberyard. So like he says, get me a road. And, let's see, what else about here? Well, yeah, the other is probably a very little minor thing too, but fiber optics is not showing on any of the plans there. So if somebody decided to start digging and dig fiber optics, it could be a kind of a disappointment. So that's it. So I guess that's about all I really have to say. And I guess, I would like to say that on a whole, I'm in favor and in support of this area structure plan. But there's some small but important, important points that I have outlined in my submissions that I would like to be addressed before the second reading. So I'd like them to be addressed and see just what happens before the second reading, so.
Right.
So I don't know if I come and yell again or whatever.
You've done just fine in representing your concerns, both orally and in writing and...
No, I'm in total agreement with what's happening there, but there's just a one little road movement that I would like.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, I'll call for any additional comments from the floor with respect to this matter? No? Oh, gentlemen?
Hi, I'm Kelly Day with Scotty's Essel. And my concerns are the closure of that south access to my property, both safety and business-wise. I'm just going to have all sorts of trucks parking all along my north end using Tim Hortons. I know they have parking across the street, but for a quick coffee, they're not going to, they end up in my lot, which is, I can deal with that. Anyway, it would, I get loads of fuel in and they have, I need an entrance and an exit. And as it is now, everything has to come in the north, do a U-turn to get out, there's no room. I suggest they just leave that access either as an entrance only or a right-in, right-out. You guys have my letter and see what you can do for me.
Right. Thank you very much for your comments. Anything further? Going once, twice? Nope? Okay. Then we have the written submissions and they're outlined in our package. At this time, I think I'd like to invite our engineers from Select Engineering, Mark and Jared. Who wants to take a crack at these issues? Mark?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. So Mark Busco from Select Engineering here with Jared Elliott from our engineering department, also from Select Engineering. So for the most part, we're here to answer some questions today. I was presuming that would be during the discussion at second reading, so just wanted to let you know we are here for that. And I presume that's most appropriate if there's some discussion around some of the questions that are being raised in the public hearing, that we would talk about them then if administration desires. But overall, it's been a plan that we've consulted with people on and followed the, you know, municipal development plan and other plans that are within the town. And I think that kind of represents a good plan for the area. And I think over through the process, we've been, received a lot of support from people within and we've had some time to look at their comments during this process and incorporate those. There are some things that came up that, you know, upon reflection, we still had to go our way versus looking at accommodating certain small items, I think that came up, including some of the stuff that will be discussed by the public prior to second reading. So unless there's, excuse me, unless there's questions, you know, we'll be happy to answer any specifics at second reading.
Okay. So, thank you very much. And I thank the presenters for their concerns, both orally and in writing. The public input on area structure plans is vitally important to our process as a municipality. It always is. Quite frankly, rarely do we receive comments or submissions on, at the public hearing stage. So this is actually refreshing and, and it will be enormously helpful for us. So thank you. With that, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. As we've just heard, second and third reading has not been scheduled, so that'll, when it is scheduled, people will see that. That's public information. It'll be notified appropriately and, and with, with everybody rowing in the same direction, I think we'll come up with some solutions to these issues. So, thank you very much. With that, we're moving on to item 7.0, the Community Spotlight Certificate of Recognition with, in respect of Gassellis Ballet. And I have here, ah, there you are. We have Yolanda Ladinsky here with us this morning. This matter entered our agenda happily as a result of our becoming aware of the 25th Anniversary Celebration of Gassellis Ballet in our community. Normally, we don't, we don't do a specific council presentation with respect to businesses in the community, although we do them individually at business locations. The reason we've invited Yolanda here today is because of the enormous volunteer activity offered by her and members of her studio over the years. When, at umpteen town events where classes are, are, some of your classes are invited to come and, and perform a dance and, and the offering up of your studio for things like Shaken and Drayton and, and the monumental task of teaching me to dance.
(Laughter).
Couple of years ago, yeah. Yeah. You shouldn't just get a certificate, you should get a medal for that. So I want to read the certificate. Then I'm going to invite Yolanda and then we'll, do we have somebody with a camera here so we can do a photo? Yeah, okay. So, "In recognition of longstanding contributions to arts and culture in Drayton Valley, the Town of Drayton Valley offers its sincere congratulations for 25 years of operation in our community to Gassellis Ballet and Yolanda Ladinsky." And now, I will turn it over to Yolanda to speak about her 25th celebrations.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. I am proud and honored to receive this recognition for Gassellis Ballet's silver anniversary. Twenty-five years ago, I started Gassellis Ballet in Drayton Valley with nothing but passion and love for dance. Now we are internationally recognized in Chiquetti, Acro, and many others. We have many talented teachers and gifted students, supported by the parents. On behalf of all the, I would like to thank Council for taking the time for this recognition. And I would like to invite everybody, we have a barbecue on September 9th outside at a dance studio, and I would like to invite everyone. Thank you very much. And we've got some of the dancers here to support.
Thank you very much. I'm going to come and present this certificate to you and we can have a picture with your dancers too, if that's all right. Thanks very much again. And next on our agenda, we have Staff Sergeant Kelleghou with the July RCMP Statistics. You've had a bad run of luck in the last couple of appearances, because you've had to follow some really tough acts, so...
Well, you know what, and that's, that's, that's part of it, right? All I got is, I did bring a joke for today.
Excellent.
So, this morning, I was looking for my newspaper. And I asked my daughter where it was, and she said, you know what, that newspapers are old-school, people use tablets now. So she handed me her iPad, and you know what? That fly didn't stand a chance. Anyway, I brought my sergeant here today. She's our operations NCO for the office, and I've asked her to present the stats today to council, so without further ado, I present Sergeant Aaron Matthews.
Welcome, Sergeant.
Obviously.
(Laughter) I know how to do that too.
Yes, thank you. So you all have received the stats from July. I just wanted to kind of bring you up to date on some of them. In July, we actually did do, without getting into this just yet, we had 53 tickets, three 24-hour suspensions were issued. We also, according to these, this year, we had 34 false alarms. We actually had 40, in which we attended to 22 of those, and two warnings were issued at that time during, during those. We've also received 41 patrol logs from the detachment members. Getting into some of the persons' crimes here, we did have six assaults. Four charges have been laid out of those six. Three of them were domestic-related. With regards to the criminal harassment, there was four complaints received. One charge has been laid, and that was also domestic-related as well. With regard to the break-in enters, there was obviously an increase up to 13. We do have, two of them were to the Shooter's Liquor Store. One was to the Condemned Residence, it's on 49th Street. Bless you. We had a couple of sheds that were broken into, hockey equipment was stolen. It was actually recovered shortly after. And then we had a break-in to the air-liquid facility there. Welding equipment was stolen from there. Unfortunately, we have not laid any charges in any of the break-in enters at this point. Some of them are still under investigation, however, so hopefully, something will come up with that in the future. With regards to vehicle thefts, we had five of the vehicles that were stolen were F-350s, older models, that's pretty consistent with what has been in the past. We also had a theft of a travel trailer, and we have one charge that we've laid with regards to the vehicle thefts. You see that there was a theft over $5,000. There was one occurrence for that, however, under investigation, it was deemed that it had not been stolen. So it was actually a trailer that had been rented out. So basically, that was unfounded. And the theft unders, the majority of them are from motor vehicles. Again, public has got to be reminded to lock their vehicles and not leave personal items inside their vehicles. These people are generally opportunistic. They're looking for open vehicles to get into. So, I mean, they're not generally breaking actually into the vehicles that are locked. They're looking for, you know, personal items and that type of thing that people leave in their unlocked vehicles. We had three shoplifting charge, three shoplifting... We had three shoplifting charges, three shoplifting of liquor. We had a generator that was stolen from a motor home. The rest of them, pretty much license plates being stolen off of vehicles, and some gas. And we did have a theft of some topsoil as well, so. Your mischief charges, we had two or mischief occurrences, we had two charges on those. One was to damage to a vehicle that had been laid, and also, there was some spray painting of the fence at the Omniplex, and we have a charge that was laid in that one as well. The other mischief was basically, we had youth on top of the Dollar Tree store, on top of Frankmatic School. There was one at the Lions Park where people entered the unlocked bathroom and plugged the sinks and ran water, causing flood, and the rest of them were basically loud parties.
I have a question with regard to, you know, crimes against the person which are among the most egregious. We have assaults and a subset of that in the form of sexual assaults, and I'm just looking at the stats for the year-to-date versus the month of July. So although sexual assaults seem to be up a tiny bit over previous years, nothing in the month of July, so everything was prior to the month of July. I'm wondering how we've done in terms of laying charges, have we identified suspects in each case, or?
I can speak to that. Now, when you see the, when you see there from seven to 10, from 2016 to 2017, I guess council, I'm gonna kind of remind council that this is based upon reported incidents and people that are, people, now, it could be that it's, it could be incidents such as historical ones, it could be that there's multiple victims, victims on one file. And so, don't, I guess, I would caution in sense, don't read into that there's someone who's committing these in the community, you know, in various places. It's, it's, it's one of those things where the number itself seems to be a bit inflated because of the, because of there being multiple instances on one file, where it could be there's one that happened at this date and one that happened at this date, so. And that's fairly common when we have, especially with the historical ones, we usually have multiple incidents on those files. So yes, with regards to where we're at, I can speak to the ones that I'm aware of where there's been multiple incidents. On one in particular, there was an incident, again, with some late-night partying, and then there was some thought process that this possibly could have happened, we weren't 100% certain, we went through our investigative motions to get there, and unfortunately, there wasn't enough evidence at all to proceed on any of these things. So, we couldn't establish that it actually took place, but it still is listed as an allegation. So, and some other ones, again, historical-wise, those will be still, I'm aware of a few that are still under investigation, so that's why those are, those stats we have in front of you today.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Any further questions? Counsel Fredrickson?
Good morning, thanks for the update. I'm wondering, when you're looking at the property crimes, January, July, 13, 17, I mean, there, there has been a rise in some of those numbers, it goes up and down, it appears over the course of the years, but I'm wondering, are those attributed to your, to prolific offenders? So is it the same people that are continually doing the property crimes, or are we looking at actually a rise in people that are actually committing these crimes?
You know, with regards to that, yes, it is increasing. As you've heard today, you know, as an example, with the, with say, the theft under 5,000 as an example, from 154 to 203 in the month, we had 13 from a motor vehicle, from motor vehicles as an example. That tends to be, again, the crimes of opportunity that we see quite a bit these days, where we see people, and it could be a set of people that roam through two neighborhoods, and they'll, there'll be a rash of anywhere from, like, again, 13, I've seen up to 25 in one day that come in. Some people don't even report them, that we don't even hear about. And again, that's obviously not reflected on this. You know, property crime in general is, is rising. We're looking at a few of our people who are out right now with regards to our theft of motor vehicles. Again, from last year to this year, we're fairly steady. But again, we are seeing some of those prolific offenders that were in incarceration are now out, and so unfortunately with that, we are, we do have our eye on them, but when they start up, it tends to be a bit of a one-man crime wave, and they'll see car after car after car after car getting taken, and it's a matter of locating them, catching them with this vehicle. So, we do have investigative techniques that we're using, but the big thing is, is that we tend to, yeah, you're right, it does go up and down. Sometimes we'll see it go up when they're out, and they'll come down when they're in jail, and that's kind of where it's at, and so it's a constant battle for us, so.
Anything further, Counsel Bossert?
Good morning, Staff Sergeant, good morning. Sergeant, right? Yes. I just wanted to put some numbers in perspective with the speeding violations. We have our five-year summary, July, sorry, January to July, which is page 48 of our package. We have the speeding violations from 2016 was sitting at 87, and in 2017, we're down to 15 charges for speeding violations. And then on the next page, where we have a five-year summary just for the month of July, in 2016, we have 31 speeding violations, and 2017, we have zero. So I know in 2016, we had the enforced, or sorry, photo radar enforcement, and I'm assuming that these numbers are capturing the fact that we had photo radar, but what is concerning to me is that we're now not focusing at all on speeding. I know that speeding still continues to be an issue in the community, I hear it all the time, and these numbers, to me, are saying that our focus has shifted away from speeding violations.
Actually, this is more of a scoring issue with regards to July, because we did actually have some speeding tickets. I can't honestly tell you exactly how many, but I can find out when I go back to the detachment, but it isn't really zero for July for speeding violations. Certainly, the photo radar definitely had an impact. One of the other things that had an impact on us was the fact that we actually didn't have members trained to do radar for speeding violations. And we have since, we were able to send pretty much everybody in the detachment to be able to do the radar courses, and so there has actually been a bit of, certainly, an increase. There was a lull there for a while, as I said, we just didn't have any trained members, but now we're back on track. So, we are definitely concerned with speeding, and we are actually out there enforcing the speeding laws. And coming up with schools starting next week, we're gonna be starting doing school patrols, we're ramping up on the school patrols, both prior to school, during lunchtime, and as they're getting out as well, because that definitely is an issue.
Thank you. Anything further? Counsel Fredrickson?
Thank you. I'm just going back to the property piece again. I, I mean, I find this a struggle with our community, and we, I think, as a community, we're always trying to grapple with what makes Drayton Valley an opportunistic place to, for crime. And, you know, we've come up with ideas such as the boom-bust cycle, or people having money, people not having money, we've kind of seen both. What I'm wondering is, is, what is it, so, I mean, if you, if you have people that have been incarcerated, they come out, what, what keeps them in this community to continue with crime? What, what stops somebody from moving on to, not moving on, but, well, moving on or getting rehabilitated or having some rehabilitation efforts? Like, I know, I mean, as a community, we have a lot of community groups that, that, you know, we do the best we can with what we have, but it's just, I just find it as, I just, I find it frustrating. And, and when you look at Drayton Valley as a community across Alberta, the stats are high for our community, and I'm just wondering, why is that the case? I'm not expecting, like, it's...
And I'm not gonna offer the end-all, be-all solution of how we can stop property crime, because, again, it is, it is something where it's a continual battle, and traditionally, property crime is one of our low-solve crime areas. Just to be blunt, it truly is, because again, when we get these calls, we're usually behind the eight ball when we start to begin with, because we're reacting to an action that actually took place. So again, looking for evidence on scene, if there's, if there's nothing that's suitable for us to use, then we have to look at, is there any cameras available? Is there any way that we can identify who these suspects are? You know, our GIS section, usually, they have a mandate for property crime as well, and part of that is, is them using whatever resources they have on a more project basis. If we ever get to the point where we're getting a huge amount of this going on, like, we're getting slammed with this, usually, that's when we call them in and say, "Look, we need to find out who's doing this and put a stop to it." So, we are, we are monitoring when this, when this takes place, but if I could give you a definitive answer as to why, you know, you had mentioned rehabilitation. I guess it's been my experience that she can lead a horse to water, but unfortunately, if they choose to take that drink, is another story. Not to say that some people get tied up in the lifestyle, whether it's the people they hang around with, whether it's the fact that they've lived here for 10 years or 20 years, and this is home to them and they don't want to leave to go anywhere else. You know, truly, there's, there's so many variables as to why a person does that, whether it's an addiction issue, whether it's an economic issue, that that's how they support themselves is through crime, whether it's through a bunch of other things. But again, we are, we do know who these people are. The issue that we have is how to, is to take something, take someone to court, we have to have something that's definitive proof to do so, right? And that's, that's the barrier that we have a lot of times, is it's, it's, you know, the saying, "It's not what you know, it's what you can prove." And so, in the area of court, obviously, we have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt, and so we're bringing in evidence, we're bringing in witness statements, we're bringing in the fact that we've recovered property, or whatever the case may be. So, to move back to why, why we're seeing this here, again, on the overall basis of what, what we've looked at, I know that Sergeant Matthews has been very involved in that too, there's, there's a lot of wheels turning in that. It is, there's a factor of prolific offenders, there's a factor of the opportunistic stuff that's going on. You know, and that's why we encourage the public, you know, the public, if they see something suspicious in the area, give us a call, we'll come take a look, it may chase them off for that night, may not solve the problem, but again, the public is our biggest key and our biggest tool in being able to suppress this crime, is if they see something suspicious going on, give us a call, we'll come take a look. If they see, you know, people wandering around at night with backpacks, ain't no school during night, right? So, again, just, just another example of stuff that it's the, hmm, interesting, let's go take a look at that, and let's talk to these people. So, I guess what it comes down to is, is we rely a lot, besides patrols that we do, we rely a lot on the public to assist us. I think I've made a very clear, you know, there's, the police serve the public, and the public help the police by giving us the information we need to move, to move forward with these investigations, and I'm a strong believer in that. We can't do our jobs without the public's support. So, you know, on a 30,000-foot basis, you know, the more information we get, the more reports we get, the better off we're gonna be, and the more we can detect when things are actually happening instead of after the fact. So, hope that kind of gives a general idea on that.
Alright, do we have anything further? Okay. Thank, thank you so much, Sergeant, Staff Sergeant?
Thank you very much.
Alright, moving to our decision items, so we have 9.1, I'll call upon Legislative Services Coordinator, Shandra Dick.
Good morning, thank you. As council will likely recall, at the last meeting on August 9th, we brought forward two policies, the Accountability and Transparency Policy and the Public Consultation and Communication Policy. Following the direction from council at that meeting, administration proceeded with the notice to the public, both through the town's page in the Western Review and online through our webpage and social media. We asked for comments and feedback from the public, just to ensure that we try to address any concerns that might arise. As of today, we have received nothing, so I would like to believe that's because they're wonderful and [laughs] everybody's happy. The fortunate thing about policy is that they're living documents, so if we are finding that practices need to change or requirements need to be adjusted, then that can be done. We would follow the same process of bringing it back through council to make any suggested changes, but this is a good first step in at least implementing these policies and showing the public our practices and how we reach out to ensure that they're included as much as possible. Additionally, this is going to be a requirement in April of next year for a public consultation or participation policy through the new Municipal Government Act, so we're being proactive in establishing something now. So, if council is willing, I would like to request that we proceed with approval of the policies and implementation, at which point, then we can bring back any feedback that we're hearing from the public as well.
Alright, thank you very much. So do I have a motion from council, Counsel Fredrickson, right out of the chute? This was something, of course, that Counsel Fredrickson is very concerned and interested about, and I think that concern is shared by all of council, and, and I want to echo Shandra's comments about getting ahead of things with respect to our legislative requirements under the new changes to the Municipal Government Act. We, we must adopt a public consultation policy, and this, this goes further than the bare minimum, and, and we're doing it far sooner than we need to, but I think it's important that our community sees that we are responsive in this important area. Go ahead, Counsel Fredrickson.
I'd like to make the motion that council approve the Accountability and Transparency Policy, C-01-17, and Public Consultation and Communication Policy, A-04-17, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do we have discussion on the motion? Counsel Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Initially, I was somewhat disheartened and a bit concerned that we'd had no comment from public engagement through any of our social media and advertising efforts, and part of me believes that that's, given the time of year, that we've chosen to put this out to the public. However, Ms. Nykew said that this is a living, breathing document, that if there are amendments that need to be changed in the future, we absolutely have the opportunity to make those changes based on what we hear from the community. I think this is a very, these are two very important policies that our council is moving forward to implement. They will be forced upon us in a few months if, by the provincial government, so we're acting wisely to be ahead of that. And I think that the policies themselves are very strong, very good directive to the accountability and transparency of... accountability and transparency of council, and with our engagement processes with the community as well. So, the fact that it's, policies can be changed from time to time as the need arises, I can lend my support to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bossert. I think it's important not to be too disheartened about the absence of public commentary. When was the last time we received feedback on a policy that was introduced, positive or negative? And positive, almost never. They just assume that, okay, well, it's good to go. Councilor Fredrickson?
Thank you. I'd like to give my thanks to administration for bringing these policies to the forefront. And a lot of these things, when council had discussed this, and we looked at information on this, a lot of this, this policy on the accountability and transparency ends up acting as an umbrella for a lot of things that we are legislated to do by the provincial government, as well as some of the things that council has chosen to do on their own accord. The one thing that I do like to bring, we've also enhanced things that we're already doing. So, when you look at 8.1E and, or F, under budget, budget discussions deliberations will include public sessions. I think this council has really made huge strides in increasing our transparency with the community. We have posted our capital and operational budgets on our website, which was something that up until recently wasn't common practice. We've included quarterly financial updates from our finance department, which is also new to this council, as well as seeing that this is another enhancement on top of that, where we're including those public sessions. I think that this holds our council, as well as future councils accountable, to the public in terms of being transparent, being open in the role that we've been elected to do. So, I'm very happy to see this, and I'm liking to see that we're ahead of the mark in terms of the community engagement piece as well.
Right. Absolutely right. It is something, of course, that we heard loud and clear in the 2013 elections, and we heard it in the two by-elections that we've experienced during this term as well. Accountability and transparency seem to be on people's minds, although the definition of those things sometimes defies logic. But those things nonetheless are, broadly speaking, important to the public, and they should be. So, the fact that we have acted on it, and repeatedly so throughout this term, I think, speaks to the level of responsiveness that this council has taken on these issues. So, anything further on this? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Thanks so much. 9.2, a call upon Director of Corporate Services, Pam Livingston.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel. The council request for decision in your package, page 41 of 50, is in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, which states that council must appoint one or more councillors as deputy chief elected official, so that only one councillor will hold that office at any one time. The RFD is also in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley policy, C-0314, the position of deputy mayor is held on a rotating basis for a term of eight months. At the regular meeting of council on January 11th, 2017, council approved an amendment to the rotation of the deputy mayor's schedule, and appointed councillor Fredrickson as deputy mayor from January 11th, 2017, to September 11th, 2017. At that time, the discussion was based on the anticipation that councillor Bossert would resume the role on September 12th, 2017, although that was not confirmed by resolution at that time. In anticipation that the appointment period for councillor Fredrickson is drawing to a close, council is required to make a resolution to appoint another councillor as the next deputy mayor for the term of September 12th, 2017, through to and including October 22nd, 2017. Council may choose to appoint councillor Bossert as the deputy mayor for this aforementioned term, which would allow councillor Bossert to complete her eight-month term, which was amended earlier this year, and is in compliance with Town of Drayton Valley policy, C-0314. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, do I have a motion? Councilor Long?
Thank you. I move that council approve the appointment of councillor Deborah Bossert as deputy mayor for the Town of Drayton Valley for the term of September 12th, 2017, to October 22nd, 2017. I just realized I did not have my microphone live there. Do you want me to say that again?
Did we get that? Maybe you won't.
I'll do it right this time, I promise. I move that council approve the appointment of councillor Deborah Bossert as deputy mayor for the Town of Drayton Valley for the term of September 12th, 2017, to October 22nd, 2017.
Thank you, Councilor Long. I think I heard a campaign slogan in there, too. Is there any discussion on this motion? Sometimes I can't help myself, sorry. Councilor Fredrickson, please.
Thank you. As the outgoing deputy mayor, September, as of September 12th, 2017, I just wanted to say that it has been an honor and a privilege to be able to serve as deputy mayor, or in that role as deputy mayor. As this council has done, they've enhanced the role of deputy mayor, where it expands to many more spheres and spaces that coalesce with the mayoral role. And it has been an excellent run. It's being able to, you know, give speeches, and express to the community the, just the wonderful things that they're doing, being able to get more insight in speaking with the mayor about that mayor's role, being able to chair meetings, you know, meet with ministers and stuff. It has just been a wonderful experience, and I think it has just been a nice cap to the overall experience that I've gained in terms of my role as councillor. So, I appreciate the mentorship that Mayor McLean has provided in terms of this role, and I welcome Deborah Bossert back to the role of deputy mayor.
And I want to thank the outgoing deputy mayor, Councilor Fredrickson, for her service, which goes, as she alluded to, goes above and beyond the typical role of a councillor, the role that was previously people were used to. Over this term, I've engaged the deputy mayors, and we've since adopted a policy to formalize the role of deputy mayor, with some additional responsibilities. And I'm very grateful for the service of all our deputy mayors. Councilor Fredrickson had a particularly busy time, and that's just, you never know what you're going to get. And she acquitted herself admirably throughout the term. So, thank you for your service, and we still have a motion before us, so we should probably address that. All in favor? That is carried, and look forward to working with Councilor Bossert once again. All right. At this time, going to take a short break, and we'll re- Okay, we're back. Call the meeting back to order. Welcome, and we're on to department reports. Start with Engineering and Development, Sonya Regelsward.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. There were six development permits issued, three of them residential, three of them commercial, over the last three weeks, and three new business licenses were issued over the last three weeks as well. Mackenzie Avenue rehabilitation is complete with line painting, and the sanitary cured-and-place pipe project has commenced. Phase two, where the lining will take place, is scheduled to begin September 11th, and the residents will receive hand-delivered notification 48 hours in advance of any service disruptions. That's it.
I have a question just with regard to the notice. Is there a magic to the 48 hours? Could it be longer? Why 48 hours?
The company will be giving 48 hours notice to the residents that there will be a disruption, so the residents will have four hours of where they can't use their water, or use their sanitary system. And it's just to give some advance warning that this is coming in place, and the notices have been delivered last week, so that there is some notification already in place, that residents will know that this is happening September 11th.
Oh, they've already been told it's September 11th?
Yes.
And then they're going to get another 48 hour?
That's right.
Okay, I got you.
That's right.
Good. Thank you. Any questions, Sonya? Councilor Bossert?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this curing in place, do we have a tentative completion date for the project?
It is planned for a week, so it will end that Saturday, so I'm not sure which day that is. 16th, it's planned to end on Saturday.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you. And now, we're on to Community Services and FCSS. Antrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, council. Just a few things, because, of course, we're heavy into budget time, both capital and operating, so I just want to report on a few things. Because summer is wrapping up, and certainly, programming has been very heavy over the last course of, actually, the current year-to-date. So, just some stats to provide for council. Number of youth program participants so far to date, 821 children were involved in our programs. But just the variety of programs that have been put on is just amazing. I'll just name the few that I've got here. Arts in Action, Muck and Mess, Textile Art, Nature Play for Kids, Nature Play into the Woods, Pokemon Go Club, the Lego Club, the Forest Skate Park Jam, the Sports and Adventure Camp, Parks Play. Like, it just, it keeps on going. We also have a number of different family program, and with those family programs, we had another 600 children involved in those family programs, and they included things like the indoor playground, woodworking, hairplay, Daddy and Me Play Dates, the breakout rooms, which, of course, is very popular. I think we had over 200 participants just for the breakout rooms. So, we will be continuing on with programs during the course of the rest of this year, of course, with not just children's programs, but also the adult programs, which I haven't even mentioned. September 5th, I want to make sure people in the community understand, we have the Community Registration Night happening that evening, always, always a very busy night. And, again, for anybody who's new to our community, it's the opportunity for you to register your children or yourself in a multitude of different activities happening within our community for the fall and winter seasons. And then, the last thing, it's just a reminder about the Net Zero Study presentation regarding the aquatic facility tomorrow at 1:00 at the Mackenzie Conference Center. Jacob Comar from Revolve Engineering will be present to outline the results of his study. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, just a comment. I, all of council, received a copy of the Fall and Winter Community Services Programming Guide, and I have to say, I'm very impressed, not with just the extensiveness of the programming, but with the guide itself. It's engaging, it's colorful, and it's something that I think that our community, especially our Community Services Department ought to be very proud of. We offer just a wonderful assortment of programming from the littlest of toddlers up to our seniors. Everybody has, there's something for everybody in that guide. So, kudos to your department for putting it together, and kudos to all those that have networked with the town in offering programs for the residents of our community.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Economic Development, Eric Burton.
Morning. Good morning. So, I have a fairly brief report, if you can believe that. As long as I don't say the word hemp. No, we've had a good month of really reconnecting with a lot of folks, getting a good understanding of what people have planned for the fall. We're going to be working with the Chamber of Commerce and helping them to build the Arts and Culture Committee. That's something that came out of the Arts and Culture Roundtable, and the chamber is really excited about that, so I'm going to help them to connect some of the dots and make sure that that Arts and Culture Committee is not just something that, you know, is technically happening, but rather really embodies what the Arts and Culture Community wants to see from community leadership. So, pretty excited about that. We've got a lot of momentum going around, going on in the hemp cluster project. In particular, I was in Edmonton for a meeting of the Northern Alberta Hemp Processing Initiative. They also got CARES funding. And on one hand, it was exciting to know that the work that they're doing is not duplicate and reinforces the work we're doing. It was also exciting to know that we're way ahead of anybody else in Western Canada, if not North America, in our understanding of the market and the pieces that we've put into place. So, we're really excited to see those things continue to come together. I also want to mention that I had the great opportunity of connecting with the Drayton Valley Hospitality and Tourism Authority's new executive director, a very experienced and professional gentleman, who I want to give him a shout-out here, Tom Hendricks. He's already, he's three or four weeks on the job, and has already really demonstrated a hell of a little competence. He's got a good understanding of where he wants to go, and how to engage the community in getting there. We've already connected some dots on how the work he's doing overlaps with the Powered By Entrepreneur strategy, and really excited to continue to work with him. So, thanks very much, Tom, for your, you know, blowing us to work together. And so, that, in a nutshell, is the things that we've been moving forward, and looking forward to. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Eric. I'll go to questions in a minute, and then, Tom, if you're comfortable with the idea of coming to introduce yourself and talk about anything that you have on your plate at the moment, you're welcome to do it. Don't want to put you on the spot, but this is a good opportunity. Everybody does it, yeah.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be here. The reason I'm here wasn't to get introduced, but, one, you're in a community, and I've moved from Edmonton, accepted the position. My family moved a week after I started the job, so I am part of the community, which also means I want to know how everything in the community works. So, I've discovered all the great coffee clatches, and all the rumor mills, and have been to the Rotary Club, looking forward to going to the Chamber of Commerce, because I believe if you're going to work with a community, you have to be a part of that community. So, 38 years of Edmonton is gone, I now live on 10 acres, about 20 minutes away. My name as mentioned is Tom Hendricks. I come from a background in marketing, tourism, and promotion. Most of my career in Edmonton revolved around the automotive business, management, sales, general management, finance, et cetera. But along the way, I was always involved in marketing and promotion projects with car clubs, with aviation clubs, et cetera. In 1996, I brought the first races to city center airport, the Tommy Fox Classic, which was very educational and interesting, and brought 25,000 people to an airport that had never had a race on it. I spent 20 years, excuse me, 13 years as a volunteer with the Alberta Aviation Museum, having been president of a number of organizations. For just about 10 years, I was the executive director, and in that period, we were able to take the museum from a small community museum to a nationally-recognized museum, put on events of national significance, particularly in 2009, and really penetrated into the tourism market, receiving coverage from as far away as Australia, the United States, and into Europe. So, I have a very strong background. And one nice thing about having a strong sales background is you know that everything you do is about people. So, you better understand people, you better know how to work with people cooperatively. People don't like being told what to do, they like to get help, and that's what I'm here to do. In the time I've been with the Drayton Valley Hospitality and Tourism Authority, I've been to most meetings, as I mentioned, well into developing a tourism framework. There is amazing ability and possibility here in Drayton Valley, so I'm very excited about that. And it's also just a wonderful community to live in. And I think that pretty much sums it up in five minutes or less, the Reader's Digest version, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much, and welcome to the community.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to the fruits of your labor, and working with you, of course, and the DVHTA, so-
Thank you so much.
Now, Councilor Fredrickson, you had your hand up earlier, and the question maybe for Eric, maybe for you, Tom, so, okay. So, if you just want to tag team, that's great. Eric?
Hi.
Hi. I was just looking at the, our entrepreneur plan that we have, and I noticed there that we adopted it in August tenth, two thousand and sixteen, so it's been a year. I'm just wondering if, I wouldn't be looking for this at this point in time, but hopefully sometime if we would be able to schedule a time where we could just get a, an update of how the year has gone. Have we made some of the benchmarks that we were looking at, to that effect? If that's something that you would find agreeable? And I'm looking to the mayor at that as well.
Yep. Before Eric responds, Councilor Long is itching to get in on this, yeah.
Just, and Eric could've said this just as well as me, but the committee's actually been working on that. We're gonna have a sort of review of where we've come and where we still need to get, coming to a future governance and priority meeting. We don't quite have a date yet, but we've got something coming.
Perfect.
Is that your answer?
Yeah, that's my answer.
Anything further for Tom or Eric? All right. Thank you both. And again, welcome, Tom.
Thanks very much.
Emergency Services, Chief Thompson.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. Not a lot to report this council meeting. My apologies for not having any stats, we were busy with a kids camp, this lasted a little while, a very successful kids camp. Just one of the things in regards to the kids camp, some people ask why is the fire department putting on a kids camp. There's a bigger picture here that we all have to be aware of, and that's the volunteer base of the fire service. As everybody knows, we continually struggle to maintain our, our membership through volunteerism. People are busy in their lives with many, many activities, and the demands of the fire service require a lot of time from, from a volunteer member. And so, if we're able to start instilling the importance of volunteering to the community at a young age, we can carry that through, right, hopefully, right through to adulthood. And we've already had some success already with, with some of our little dealings going off to join into the high school program. And from the high school program, we now have had members that have graduated from the program and are now members of our department. So we are starting to see the, the reward of our, of our hard work with kids camps. So, it's just important for, for everybody to, to recognize that there is an investment, absolutely, in our kids, but it, it, hopefully, it will pay off at the end with having our kids volunteer for our department later on. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Tom. The, the kids camp has always struck me as both a unique and invaluable capacity-building experience for our kids. So it does help build the volunteer firefighter base within the community, but I think it also generally makes for a more fire-aware community, right? These kids go home, and they tell their parents everything that they just learned, and learned enthusiastically, as you can see it on their faces every day. And I'm sorry I wasn't there on Friday for the wrap-up, but I understand everything went really well. So, congratulations on another successful year. And Council Frederickson has a comment.
You're entirely right, and to take something that Tom had just said, is that you're creating these relationships. My daughter was able to go to one of your guys' camp, things that you do through the Early Childhood Development Center, and she was chosen to turn on the lights on the fire truck or something, and even at two, it just, it made her day. She was wearing her fire chief hat all after I picked her up and, from the daycare and stuff. So, you are building these relationships with these kids at an extremely young age, and it, it really does resonate with them, even at two.
Yeah. So, well done, thank you. All right. So, I think we're moving on to the acting CIO report, Pam Livingston.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council. In support of some significant initiatives and program changes, the Communications Department has created some dedicated webpages, one specifically for the two thousand and seventeen municipal election, and one in support of the fall cleanup, and as well as the curbet program that the mayor mentioned in his proclamation earlier in this meeting. There are also, in support of those three things, there will be a number of initiatives promoted via social media over the coming weeks to enhance awareness and education for residents of Drayton Valley about those three things. I'll provide some brief stats from Communications. The top five webpages that were visited in the last few weeks were the Park Valley Pool, Employment Opportunities, the Contact Us page, the Campground, and the Landfill. In total, there were six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six users of the website. Of that number, fifty-seven point six percent were new users. It's very interesting. And that's all I have for today, if I have any questions.
Any questions? Pam? All right, thank you. Moving on to council reports, Councilor Dirkson.
Thank you. The lulls of summer are starting to subside, and things are picking up. I had the pleasure of attending a Drayton Valley Community Foundation meeting on August twenty-first. They have a lot going on, obviously trying to raise funds and continue their community foundation. September ninth is their DV one hundred, which I believe a few of you are participating in. I will be a volunteer at that event, so should be a little less strenuous for me, but I wish all of you the best. August twenty-third, tour of the Aspen Waste Management Facility. Very interesting. I mean, I knew about our reuse-it center, my first time actually being there. I was surprised by some of the stuff that was there. I'll have to frequent there a little bit more often, and the one probably most shocking thing I learned was, at the end of every day, they have to put six inches of topsoil over top of their waste that they have there. That seems like an awfully arduous task, but I guess if we don't want flies, then it's something that has to be done. I learned some other things as well, but that was the most shocking thing. August twenty-eighth, we had the Economic Development Committee meeting, and as Graham and Eric alluded to, we kind of working on wrapping it up a little bit, so future council can see where we have been, where we're going, and just to kind of take all the learnings and make sure everything moves forward in the right direction. And also on that night, we, I was privileged, as well as all of council, to attend the dinner with Norquest Board of Governors and their executives, and I don't know about you, but it was probably one of the best meals I've had in Drayton Valley in a very long time. So three nights catering did a bang-up job with that, and some excellent conversation at the table, some worldly individuals there, and excellent conversation, and it was an excellent night overall, I thought.
All right. Thank you. Council Frederickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, attended the Aspen Waste Facility Tour, and one of the messages that was loud and clear from the facility manager was the importance of diversion, in terms of, even when we looked at some of the waste that was brought to the landfill, he had said, you know, there's cardboard, that could've been diverted to recycling, or talking about organics and where the industry is headed in terms of diversion, in terms of also waste to energy. It was an enlightening conversation about waste and the possibilities that it does hold for a community such as ours. And then, yes, the, the dinner with our joint venture partners there, Norquest, their Board of Governors. It was, it was a very lovely evening, and it was, I had some great conversations. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Council Wheeler.
I have nothing to report, so thank you. Been away on holidays, it's been quiet, looking forward to, yes, definitely picking up.
Okay. Council Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August thirteenth, I had the privilege of attending the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Ukrainian settlement in Alberta, at the Ukrainian Village out by Elk Island, representing our community, are all small municipalities. A wonderful afternoon there, celebrating Ukrainian and Eastern European culture, and had a chance to speak to Deputy Premier and to Mayor Iverson, who also were in attendance. August twenty-second, of course, we had our special meeting of council. August twenty-second, we had our sixtieth anniversary meeting, and we continue to move forward with some of our plans for the anniversary year-end event, we believe will be December thirty-first. And on August twenty-third, I also took the tour of Aspen Waste, our Aspen Waste Facility, and while we were in the Take It or Leave It Center, I happened upon two chairs that I took there some months ago and left behind, only to have to reclaim them back for myself as they now replace the ones that were destroyed by hail in July. So it was a bonus day for me, getting my chairs back. My insurance company would be happy about that. And of course, on August twenty-eighth, as mentioned, we had the pleasure of entertaining the Board of Governors from Norquest at the Clean Energy and Technology Center, lively conversation with individuals at our table, and we welcome Norquest's Board of Governors and executives here for their two-day strategic meeting in Drayton Valley. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Long?
Thank you. It has been, as has been mentioned, a pretty quiet few weeks. August the eleventh, though, we did have a Clean Energy Technology Center meeting, most notable, as it was the final meeting, for Mr. Deoll, who has now moved into retirement. At his request, it was very low-key, no cake, no cards, but it would be remiss of me to let his retirement pass without giving credit to, four and a half decades, I believe the final total was, of service to our community, which is a remarkable record. So we wish him well. We've been golfing since, so he's doing well. Or better than me, anyway. Economic Development Committee, we've already mentioned a couple of times, so I won't go over that again. Also, dinner with the folks from Norquest, and the only thing I would add was that the people at my table were blown away by the quality of the food, very impressed by the quality of the facility, and equally impressed by a number of the things that they'd seen in and around Drayton Valley, including some of the shopping. They'd found some bargains, so that was, it felt like a very positive table, mine, so salute that. The only other thing I'm gonna mention is coming up this Saturday, I will be running in the Color Run, which is cosponsored by the DVHTA, of course it is, in, in support of the Boys and Girls Club of Drayton Valley. I believe you can still sign up if you guys are interested. It's only five kilometers. I can do it, so can you.
I can do it. I've done it. Not in color, though. Black and white. With respect to my report, I'm only going to speak to two things. One is the dinner meeting with the Norquest Board of Governors the other night, August twenty-eighth, and that, that was enlightening as to, you know, board, Norquest Board priorities. It was also, I think, a signal to Drayton Valley that Norquest College takes its relationship with the town of Drayton Valley seriously, and the, the tour of some of the facilities that they engaged in was remarked upon very favorably, and in particular, they're, in relation to one of our, our biomile businesses, Biocomposites Group, the, the tour of that facility sparked a great deal of interest and enthusiasm, and I know will involve further discussion as to how they can assist in, in leveraging that asset for the community and for the development of the Clean Energy Technology Center. So it was a very good evening, and again, the comments about the catering from three nights are very favorable and, and well-deserved. The final thing I wanted to touch on, as has been alluded to, the DV one hundred, coming September ninth. I'm saving myself for the cycling, so I'll have to pass on the, on the run this weekend. The, I've said before, and I'll say it again, we've been training, well, some of us have been training hard, and, and I've been training. And I just feel sorry for the competition. That's all I'm gonna say. And for anybody who, who follows these things closely, Council Wheeler will be far out and ahead of us, and Councilor Long and I will be battling for council second place, so. It probably won't be much of a battle either.
I'm a Mario optimist.
Yeah. Anyway, I pledge to do better than second last. And, yeah, anyway. That's it for my report. We have one information item, the RCMP statistics for July. Could I get a motion to receive those for information? Council Bossert, all in favor? That is carried. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Councilor Long, all in favor?